Are we ready, Nick, or no?
Not yet. Okay, President McCoyn, the live stream is running and we begin the meeting.
All right, good evening. Welcome to the meeting. I would like, I'm Patty McCoyn, I'm president of the school board. I would like to welcome everyone here who is watching on YouTube or will be watching at a later time. We are, the board members are in the boardroom socially distanced, wearing masks, and administration is in their own happy little offices. I would like to have the board members introduce themselves as we will start in alphabetical order.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Kate Borninski. I am happy to see my fellow board members and welcome to everyone watching at home. Thank you.
Good evening, everybody. My name's Doug Brooks. Thanks for joining us today on this stream.
Good evening, Patrick Kehoe. Thanks for coming out tonight.
Hi, good evening. I'm John Lazardz. I'm at the board office and thank you for coming out tonight.
Good evening. I'm Anupam Chiksedu. Thanks for watching us and for those that are here, thanks for being here. Thanks.
Ms. Barrett, would you like to introduce yourself and your staff, please?
Yes, good evening and welcome and thank you, President McCoyn, for sharing that we're in our happy place because we spend probably 12 to 15 hours a day here. So we have to figure out how to make it a happy place. I'd like to begin by introducing my assistant to you, Ms. Diane Robertson. I thank her for taking our minutes, but also just keeping us all sane as we continue to lead through this pandemic. I'd like to ask for the remaining members of the staff to introduce themselves to you, beginning with Mr. Brandon.
Good evening, everyone. Nick Brandon, Executive Director of Communications and Marketing, and welcome to tonight's meeting.
Hi, I'm Debbie Piaz. I'm the Chief Finance and Operations Officer. Welcome and thanks for being here.
Good evening, everyone. Liz Vartanian Gibbs, Assistant Superintendent Human Resources. Welcome.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Kurt Tiscus, Executive Director of Student Services. Thanks for joining us today.
Good evening, everyone. Beth Rail, Chief Academic Officer. Thanks for being here, both live and virtually.
Good evening, Heather Fitchpatrick, President, Education Association. Thank you for joining us this evening.
And now we will have the pledge. Because we are all on Zoom, I will lead the pledge. Everybody else will just stand. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, we are now to letter A, which is adoption of the agenda, approval of the consent agenda. I am looking for a motion for action item 210809.
I move that we adopt the agenda and approve of the consent agenda, action item 210809.
Second.
Okay, so it has been, action item 210809 has been moved by Member Keel and seconded by Member Brooks. Could you take us through the agenda, please?
Yes, this evening, the agenda consists of human resources transactions. It's the last we were together. We have new hires for your consideration. We have the resolution to hire the virtual academy coordinator. We have leaves and retirements, and we are working through the PCEA recall list. And so we have quite a few recalls this evening for your consideration. Also, the approval of minutes from our regular meeting on August the 11th. And that is it.
Okay, so we have been, Barrett walked us through it. I am looking for a, pardon me. I am looking for about, Member Brooks, can you take us through roll call vote, please?
Yeah, okay. First member, Borninski.
Yes.
Member Brooks, yes. Member Keel.
Yeah.
Member Lazarowitz.
Yes.
Member McCoyn.
Yes.
Member Savage. Not here. Members Sedu.
Yes.
Okay, so the motion passed 6-0 for action item 210809. Dr. Vartanian Gibbs.
Thank you, President McCoyn. Good evening, everyone. First, I would like to introduce you to three new teachers in our district. We have Molly Merriman. She will be teaching Spanish at the middle school level. She comes to us with a bachelor's degree from University of Northern Iowa and a master's degree from Morningside College, Iowa. She's also taught in Germany, New Hampshire, and Vermont, and she comes to us with 13 years of experience. Welcome, Molly. We are glad that we have you here in our district.
Thank you for having me here. I'm very excited.
Next, we have Michelle O'Neal. Michelle O'Neal will be teaching computer science at Canton High School. She comes to us with a bachelor's and a master's degree from Eastern Michigan University, as well as over 12 years of experience from local districts around us. Celine Pickney and Selene, welcome.
Thank you. I'm happy to be here.
Next, we have Jamie Scappucci. Welcome back, Jamie. Jamie is going to be our vocational marketing education teacher at Canton High School. She left us for a little bit, but she decided to return. She has a bachelor's degree from Eastern Michigan University, a master's degree from Concordia College, as well as over 15 years of experience as a teacher, and over 11 of those years were in our district. So welcome back, Jamie.
Thank you. I'm really excited to be back.
We are glad to have you. Congratulations, and we know you are going to be doing wonderful things with our students as we begin the school year, and we know you will continue to be champions.
Liz, you're mute.
Thank you so much. Next, I have the honor of introducing you to Mr. Stephen Bowyer. He will be our new virtual academy coordinator. Welcome, Stephen. Let me tell you a little bit about him. He has his bachelor's degree, his master's degree, and his specialist degree from Wayne State University. He served as a teacher in the Redford Union School District, South Lyon District, and Detroit Public Schools. He is also an adjunct professor at Wayne State. He has been the director of the Wayne, Michigan Virtual Academy, and he is ready to begin tomorrow morning here in our district as the virtual academy coordinator. So welcome, Stephen Bowyer.
Thank you. It's gonna be, it's an honor, and I can't wait to meet each and every one of you personally, but I cannot wait to be part of the Plymouth Canton family. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, I would like to congratulate four teachers who are retiring. Mary French, who is an elementary teacher from Miller. Thank you for your 24 years of service. Sherry Kosmowski, 35 years of service, taught math and science at Plymouth High School. Gretchen Miller, 19 years of service as an English teacher at Salem. And Karen Pacula, 23 years of service, math teacher at Plymouth High School. So.
Liz, you're muted.
Did you hear what I said about the retirements? So I just, I wanted to, I apologize for that. I wanted to thank four teachers for their service in the district. Mary French, Sherry Kosmowski, Gretchen Miller, Karen Pacula. All of them are retiring. Thank you for your service in the district. We are also very fortunate. You will notice on the consent agenda that we are recalling 10 of our teachers, and they will begin working with us on August 31st. We are very thankful for that. Thank you for your time.
All right, thank you very much. We are now on letter B, which is Board Committee Reports and Action. So it has been kind of quiet the last two weeks. We didn't have a meeting last week. But now that we are getting into gearing up for the fall and the school start, we are going to be, we have reconfigured our committees and committee work will be starting soon. So that will be very exciting. We have a lot of work for this year. Once we get into the school year, we're going to focus, do a lot of of our equity work. If people recall, the board has agreed to do equity work. We are going to be reading the book. So you want to talk about race and then having a discussion, and then we're going to do additional work around that, and we're hoping to get the community involved. So that will be very exciting. I would like to thank the board members for their patience. I know I send out a lot of nonsense emails. I will try not to do that. And if you are in the community and you have sent an email and not gotten a response, if you could follow up, I'm pretty sure we're caught up, but just to make sure. And also with school starting, because I'm a classroom teacher in another district, I will be doing all of the follow-ups at the end of the school day from now on. So just if you're not getting a response during the day, that's why. So we will move on to the Student Performance and Achievement Committee with Ms. Borninski.
Hi, everyone. I am the new Chair of the Student Performance and Achievement Committee. Glad to be back as Chair. I was a while ago. And we do have a meeting scheduled for September 16th at 4:00 PM. And it's a little, it's a slight change of time from when the committee had been meeting. So just want everyone to be aware of that. And I'm looking forward to it and glad that some of my fellow board members are joining me and our community members. So thank you.
I am Chair of the Policy Committee, and we do not have a meeting scheduled at this point. We will be getting that on the books. I will be talking to Kurt about it and we'll be setting our agenda for the year. Ms. Sedu is going to be joining us this year on the Policy Committee, so that will be very exciting. And Ms. Borninski is, of course, still staying. And then we have our community members. It's a very exciting committee. Make sure you tune in when we have our meetings. So the next one is the Finance and Operations Committee with Mr. Keel.
Mr. McCoyn, we met last Thursday, August 20th at 5:00 PM to review more work on the awards for construction manager services and architectural services, as well as to discuss the bond 2020 programs and the bid, the bid pack that we'll be discussing this evening. All three of those things will be discussed this evening. Our next meeting is Thursday, September 10th at 5:00 PM. It will also be a virtual meeting, and we'd welcome the community's attendance in that meeting.
All right, thank you so much. We are down to letter C, which is Citizens Comments. The form has been opened. People have been sending them in. As a reminder, you need to have a good email address and your first and last names, and it is limited to three minutes. So we will be reading them out loud. Member Keel will read one. Members Sedu will read one. I'll read one. We will go around until we are done.
Comment. It's from Greta Branford. During the town hall event yesterday, there was incomplete and erroneous information offered in response to one of the questions, and I would like to offer some clarification and food for thought for the board and school administrators. The question revolved around the return of certain sports, particularly swimming. MHSAA has deemed swimming to be a low-risk sport, not a moderate-risk sport. The risk category has been in place since at least June and has not changed. Mr. Hurt pointed to restrictions by MHSAA as the reason swimming was not being allowed to begin formally at PCCS, and this is not true. MHSAA has even approved competition, given certain physical distancing requirements are maintained. Part of the problem is that in our area, we have not been allowed to open indoor sports activities, including swimming tools, which include swimming pools. Despite not having indoor pools, many other school systems around us, including but not limited to Northville, Novi, Brighton, Livonia Stevenson, and Livonia Churchill, Farmington and Mercy, are actively practicing at outdoor pools. These other schools have also assisted their swim teams by paying for the outdoor pool time. It seems they were able to be proactive and come up with a plan to be sure that at least the low-risk sports would have a way forward. Competitive swim activity has been shown to be safe over the last two months at many local summer clubs with limited swimmers per lane, staggered start locations, mass on deck, closed locker rooms, et cetera. There also can be virtual meets, thus negating the need for multiple teams on deck at one time, and there would obviously be no spectators from each. At PCCS, the parent boosters of one of the swim programs at the park was able to secure outdoor pool time locally and even pay for it with booster funds and arrange for this to be run monitored by parent volunteers and captains as we were banned from having coaches present as an off-site practice. However, even this was shut down by PCCS for unclear reasons for the canned response of for the safety of students. There seems to be some concern about off-site practices, yet even in a normal year, bowling, golf, equestrian, and other events are by definition off-site. Cross country was able to hold normal coach-run, coach-run practices off-site this fall. In fact, a different swim team at PCP accesses an outdoor pool early in the season in past years. So in summary, MHSAA says swimming can go forward. It has been shown to be safe with two months of successful team swim practices in many clubs. Many other local school districts were actively practicing at outdoor pools. There are also examples of PCCS teams practicing off-site, both in non-COVID years and this year. We would love to be able to work with the administrators and athletic directors to be able to work out a solution to let students safely return to coach practices in an outdoor pool as a bridge to open indoor pools. End of comment.
Okay, I have the next one, and this one is from Judy McGill. I have been a resident of Plymouth Township since 1985 and raised my family here as a single parent. I have voted yes every time the school system needed money to ensure the PCS district was the best in Michigan. I work at Ford Motor Company, currently working remotely from home, and I'm able to safely collaborate with my team without any issue. The first discussion for us to return to the office setting is not until January 2021. With that being said, I'm bothered that the district has decided to require all staff to return to the school buildings within a few short weeks. If the board supports this decision, I feel that you are wasting the tax dollars. Myself and my neighbors have entrusted you to spend wisely for the benefit of our youngest community members. This money should be used for improving the educational outcomes and building and technology for our teachers and families need to be successful in learning safely from home. I'm aware that the district plans to offer two types of educational models, a virtual academy and a safe start option. This offers parents more options, which is good for PCCS, preferable to families sending their children to charter schools or online schools. But to force teachers that will teach at the safe start option virtually to go into their school building and teach to an empty classroom is a waste of funds that could be otherwise used for education and technology. The district's reasoning for this is so the children can see their classroom. According to the Michigan Department of Health and Human Services FAQ document dated 8/19/2020, Michiganders are required to wear face covering every time they leave their home or place of residence, one in any indoor public space. So based on this requirement, teachers are required to wear masks while on the building. So in the seeing in the classroom, the student will feel as they are in the school. But this comes at a risk of exposing their teachers and their teachers' children to a virus that could be, at the very least, sent them, send them home for several weeks, but potentially kill them. I don't see how the need to see the classroom outweighs the need for safety. I imagine losing a teacher to COVID is much more traumatizing than receiving a virtual instruction from your teacher's home, office, or kitchen table. Couldn't this classroom feeling be achieved safely using the virtual background that several board members probably use tonight? Also, for a kindergarten or language teacher, it is essential that the students be able to see their teacher's facial expressions. This is not possible when the face is covered by a mask while in the school building. But if allowed to teach from homes, students will be fully in, would be able to fully engage with the teacher without a mask. Opening an elementary building for 50 or teachers or staff, you will need a daily screening crew, administrators to take temperatures and verify the daily questionnaire, heating and cooling and lights to maintain the comfort of a building. And the cost to open up three high schools would be much more expensive due to building size, swimming pools, et cetera. Again, I feel there are much better ways to spend the district's money that supports students and staff.
Vice President Sedu, I apologize for interrupting, but we hit the three-minute limit.
Thank you.
All right, this next comment is from Alyssa Parkinson. And it is, first of all, I want to thank you for all the work you are doing to ensure student success when we begin the unprecedented fall semester. I have some questions regarding zero hour for our middle school students. How will PCCS handle middle schoolers who take zero hour at the high school? The new schedule shows both middle school and high school starting and ending at the same time. How will zero hour be accommodated? Is this option no longer available? If a student's zero hour is now first hour with the high school, then that, the student loses a middle school elective. Does the student gain it back when we phase into face-to-face? If a student ends up back in a lost elective, won't the student be behind in that class when we phase back to face-to-face? How will the student know which elective is lost? Will there be a choice? What happens when students go back face-to-face? Will the high school go back to its original start time, or will the current safe start schedule remain? My student is scheduled to take zero hour German. My star currently shows high school enrollment for this class. The logistics of this are confusing. She cannot be in two places at once, even in a virtual scenario. And if she loses an elective but gains it back when we phase back in, then she will be significantly behind in the lost elective. Could you please supply more detail on how zero hour for middle schoolers will work this fall? More information on this would be helpful, and that is the end of that comment.
Comment is from Anastasia Orlandi. Comment is, is there an ongoing conversation happening regarding the possibility of changing the start times for school this year? End of comment.
The next one is from Alyssa, which is a repeat, so I'm going to skip to number six. And this one is from Terry A. Again, please complete your first and last name fully. The comment is, teachers have become a hated group over the past few decades. We are seen as lazy babysitters. It is my job to stand up to the bullies when my students, who are gay, trans, black, Latinx, special ed, et cetera, are being picked on. At what point is the district going to recognize that forcing teachers to teach remotely from their classrooms due to a hateful community members controlling the narrative? It is punitive. These same community members who are continually bashing and degrading us are then going to send their children in for you, for us to protect. Would it be okay for me to allow students to get picked on because it is too challenging and awkward to stand up to the bullies? Stand up for me. Stand up for us. End of comment.
This next comment is from Anthony Victor. It says, it has been said that staff with doctor's notes will be allowed to work from home. It is almost the start of the school year, and these staffs still have no answers. They have been told it's a case-by-case basis. How is it decided if a staff's medical condition isn't enough to work from home while virtual, even with a doctor's note? Who is being consulted in these decisions? How can the district override a reasonable accommodation requested by a doctor? When will these staff get a yes or no answer? End of comment.
Anne Monroe, please reconsider the directive that teachers must teach exclusively from their classrooms. Whatever small benefits may be gained from students seeing a small portion of their classroom online pale in comparison to the benefit that teachers will receive to their physical, mental, and emotional health if they're allowed to choose where they work. Teachers have been meeting and collaborating virtually since March and can continue to do so. Forcing teachers to work from their buildings puts them at a greater risk of contracting COVID-19, especially with the addition of staff's children being brought into the buildings. If and when teachers become ill, the responsibilities will fall to a sub. I would rather have a healthy teacher working from their home than a sick teacher out of commission and a substitute fumbling through lessons. Students need stability now more than ever. That will come from having a healthy, consistent teacher, not a consistent background to look at. Teachers in many surrounding districts have been given choice. Please respect PCCS teachers and honor their wishes to have choice as well. End of comment.
This next one is from Kevin Arroyo. Is it too late for forethought, too late for logic, too late for empathy? All of these were abandoned by the district's so-called leaders, first by proposing a face-to-face learning start September 8th, and now citing arbitrary term dates and endangering the lives of teachers by forcing them to work from their classrooms. None of these people behind these choices should be sleeping well at night, knowing that they are responsible for harm to students and employees this year. The legacy of two named staff will always be turning PCS, PCCS, from a destination district to, into the shame of Wayne County. And if the board refuses to use their power to stop them, it will be theirs as well. End of comment.
Okay, this next comment is from Kim Choi. I would like to ask the administration and members of the school board to support our school district teachers and staff by urgently supplying them with the technology and supplies they need. While certain items such as extra monitors, microphone headsets, and document cameras may not be deemed essential in a normal school year, I do believe they are desperately needed for teachers and students to be successful with both the virtual academy or safe start models. Our teachers should not be expected to use their own money to buy additional tech. They need to do their job successfully, especially when we have a technology bond as well as COVID-19 funds to offset many of the additional needs of the school year. If we truly believe in supporting our district's students to learn, prepare, and thrive, we should be ensuring their teachers and support staff have everything they need to make this possible. During the normal school year, parents and community members are always willing to step up and donate any needed items to the teachers through the supply closet Facebook group. And I know they would willingly purchase new tech items now. However, these items should be the school district's responsibility. Thank you. And that is the end of that comment.
Patrick Winkle, I'm an industrial hygienist, health and safety professional for a large utility in Michigan. I have been an integral member of our pandemic response team. My educational and work experience are very well-suited for pandemic response. I have a strong background in personal protective equipment, cleaning and disinfection protocols, epidemiology, ventilation, and blood-borne pathogen control. My company has been very successful at limiting the spread of coronavirus and has maintained an infection rate that is a fraction of the state's infection rate due to our efforts. My wife is a teacher within the district. I've been very engaged in PCCS's return to school plans and have some serious concerns that the latest information indicates the requirements for teachers to teach from their classrooms. It's also my understanding that teachers are allowed to bring their children to school building with them. This is not a wise decision and frankly increases risk of illness or worse to your employees and their children. Health and safety of your students and staff should be the utmost importance, and it feels as though the district is forgetting the latter. One of the most basic principles which all should follow during the pandemic is that anyone who does not need to leave their house shouldn't. For the learning environment, this is no different. If a teacher needs access to their building because they cannot do their job at home, i.e. internet connectivity issues, access to classroom materials that cannot be brought home, then they should have the option to access to their building. But in general, school buildings should be as empty as possible until it is safe to return to school. There are complex control measures that need to be in place to work as safely as possible in a building. Based upon what I've heard from previous board meetings, I have concerns that those on the reentry task force do not have the right technical expertise to develop proper safety standards. I've been made aware that there have been concerns regarding the cleanliness. I've been made aware that there have been concerns regarding the cleanliness of schools since the outsourcing of custodial services to GRBS prior to the pandemic. This is very concerning, understanding how critical disinfection and cleaning practices are to reducing the risk of illnesses in facilities with multiple people in them. With all of this in mind, there have been several reasons the district administration believes it is important for teachers to report to schools that I would like to weigh in on with my professional opinion as I've managed many similar issues in my work life. Connectivity is one of the reasons provided, but with not every school building having an IT professional, and I'm not sure this makes much sense. Almost all technical issues can be resolved remotely, and the rare instance where they cannot, a building visit may be necessary for a teacher to continue with her essential functions. Another reason is for education and instruction in the new learning management system. This also can be conducted remotely as it is conducted by most other organizations, including my own. Lastly, there is a desire from the administration to give an appearance that school is open and in session. What it really comes down to in my professional, in my profession, is acceptable risk. Is the risk of this activity worth doing it in this manner, or is there a better approach? From my point of view as a safety and health professional, this would not be acceptable to bring staff to buildings unless there is a critical need to continue an essential function such as internet access, power outage, equipment need, etc. On a more personal note, I have a significant concern for the well-being of my wife, friends and the overall community. Is this type of non-essential in-person gathering?
We have hit the three minute limit.
This next one is from Jenny Jones. Will the questions submitted for the town hall that were not answered be published? It felt like the questions were selected very closely. Many of these questions had already been answered during the board meetings. End of comment.
This next question, comment is from Brad Silverman. We have to admit that we don't know what we don't know, and there is no doubt that goes into the discussions and decisions that are made at the district level than most of us could possibly imagine. Your staff, your students and your community thank all administration and task force members for their efforts over the last several weeks. That said, at town hall meetings, at board meetings and at union meetings, we are still constantly getting answers like we are currently discussing, we will be looking at, we will be making that decision soon, we are waiting to hear. We don't know, but we are working on it, etc., etc., etc. The first day of school is fourteen days away. The time for discussion, planning, debate and waiting has long since passed. Staff and families have plans to make, but our district has failed week after week to provide any concrete information that will allow those plans to take shape. You owe it to your community members to do better. The time to make decisions is now. The time to present plans and schedules is now. The time to give all us all the answers we require is now. No more waiting, no more surveys, surveys, no more wait and see. Your job is to get this done. It should have been done weeks ago. Please, on behalf of your entire community and for the sake of your entire community, get the job done now. That is the end of that comment.
Peterman, and the comment is, what about subs? As a substitute, will I be able to still pick up jobs during remote start? I love being a sub, but I can't sit around and wait to see what happens. Are you worried about losing subs during this time? End of comment.
This next one is from Charles Hamline. Why don't we have specific answers about if our HVAC systems are up to date in the buildings? When can we expect an answer concerning this? Who is HR consulting when they make the determination as to whether or not teachers will be given exempt status for teaching in the classrooms due to personal or familial health issues? End of comment.
Okay, this next comment is the remainder of Judy McGill's comment that was cut off at the three minute mark. Now to accommodate teachers with children, you are allowing them to bring their children into the classroom with them, which only causes more concerns. More people to scan and confirm that exposed, even though more and more studies show that children tend to be asymptomatic spreaders. Are you going to provide headsets to each of those students so they can hear only their own teachers and not disturb their siblings and or teacher parent? Are you going to ensure the teacher is not going to interfere with their own children's learning while teaching? In the end, it is my hope that you follow the lead of several surrounding districts and treat your staff as the consummate professionals that they are. Allow them the choice to work from the buildings, not the directive. In the end, the district and the district's family will benefit from the peace of mind, knowing that our teachers are not worrying about one more thing during this global pandemic. You will see this increased productivity and overall improved educational experiences for all of our students. Please make the right choice. Thank you, and that is the end of that comment.
From Todd Mundorf, I certainly appreciate how challenging the school year has been to plan for and to execute for everyone involved. My concern is around the level of animosity that appears to be building between the administration and the teachers, which is bad for everyone, especially our children. While our districts are conveying an approach of administration working with teachers arm in arm, PCCS feels very contentious and condescending in this regard. Specifically, as a starting point, I would request that you reconsider allowing teachers to begin the year teaching from their homes as other districts are doing. This will allow my child to be taught by our great teachers rather than substitutes due to the unnecessary leaves that this policy is creating. Furthermore, given the number of people in the buildings, many teachers would and should logically wear masks for their safety, which further creates distance rather than connection with students. I believe that this is especially important, given that we are late in the process getting our teachers and students acclimated to the new learning management system. Thank you for your consideration. End of comment.
This next one is from Chrissy Ripper. Has there been any decisions made about support staff? Our schools and students need these individuals. Is there any concern that because our support staff have not heard anything about their jobs, they will look elsewhere for employment? If these individuals leave, how do you plan to replace them? End of comment.
Okay, the next comment was a duplicate, which we've hit the three minute mark on, and I do not know where that was ended. So I'm going to go to the next comment, which is Brad Silverman. Says, based on tonight's citizens comment, it seems like our citizens are far more concerned with the health, safety and emotional well-being of your staff and the district administration. The voices you claim to serve have been heard loud and clear week after week, including tonight. Will you listen? And that is the end of our citizens comments for this evening. If you have additional thoughts, you are free to, of course, email them in to the administration or the school board. And we thank you for your interest and the community engagement. So we are now on to D, which is administrative reports and recommendations. And number one is superintendent's report.
Thank you. I, although we don't respond to citizens comments, I just want to take an opportunity to share that I am fully committed to making decisions that are in the best interest of our students and staff, and so is our team. And I know that we hear frustration and fear and anxiety on these citizens comments, and that is okay. It's expected. We are in a pandemic. But I will say that we are not divided as a school district. We stand united, and although we might not always agree, I think that we can all agree that we do make interests or decisions in the best interest of our students. There's sometimes partial information out there, which I do understand. I just want to be clear, we're excited that we have a virtual academy that has four thousand students almost enrolled in this academy. Almost a hundred and fifty teacher positions. When we hear about choice, our teachers have a choice to to teach in the virtual academy, which is a virtual choice, a virtual option. So we encourage our teachers to exercise that choice if they feel that they are not able to come to a face-to-face environment. We have open communications within our HR department, and I'm really proud of the work that we do consistently to work collaboratively. And I just am concerned that conversations that we continue to to have as we work through this space of uncertainty will leave us in a place where we are divided. And I continue to say and encourage us each and every week, we must stand united. Every single person in this district cares about our students. We're making the best decisions. Our students deserve an opportunity to have an excellent experience this year, which will be a year like no other. We will work with our staff, we will provide accommodations, but we will guarantee that we have a respectable and exciting start to the school year. And with that, I want to always just remind all that our doors are open, our phones are available, our emails are open. Please reach out to us directly. Two-way conversation is the best way so you can get those answers to the questions that you may have. One thing that I continue to publicly ask for is grace, and I ask that for our thousand teachers, because you will need that as well. As people wonder, where are all the answers to these questions? When I say that it truly is a pandemic, and sometimes we don't have all of the answers, but we sure are figuring it out. And we will not start this school year without having every tool in the hands of our teachers that you need and the tools in the hands of our students that they need and our parents to be equipped with the information that they need to be successful. I ask for that same grace for our teachers, because you will receive complaints this school year about the way that you are teaching and and different expectations that our community has, has. But we have your back because we're all in this together. So I am so fully confident that we are going to emerge on the other side of this with a story to tell. We are PCCS strong, and we will not let this divide us. With that, I want to say today was a great day in terms of welcoming our administrators back and our administrators having their leaders meeting this morning, just feeling the energy of the excitement of a school year. And they don't have all of the answers right now, but they are learning today and they are ready to begin leading as they have been doing throughout the summer and providing much-needed information as we work together on schedules and details how on how to best start this school year together. So I'm energized, I'm excited about the work that will come. I appreciate our administrators, because now they will also be carriers of information and communication. And so we continue to ask for your patience. It will come. Our teachers are going to be back on August the thirty first. Many of our teachers have been working hard throughout the summer, readying themselves for our Canvas learning and our new approach to learning, our remote space that all of us will be in. And we appreciate that. We also appreciate and respect the anxiety and fear, because it's real. COVID-19 is the enemy, not administration, not our teachers, not our support staff, not our family, not our students. Once again, we are in this together, and I just have to continue to believe in us and believe that we will respect each other as we pull through this together. With that, I'd like to just give a huge shout out to our team, our communications department, who last evening led us through our virtual community town hall, and that was a partnership with the parent council board. I always appreciate that council as they are the bridge from our school districts and buildings to our community. We had more than eleven hundred people that viewed that live stream last night. There were questions and feedback that we were able to give, a lot more questions than we had time. We had two hours. I know that thousands of people have watched this video since that time. And we will continue with these virtual town hall events. They were very successful. I think, once again, it's a great two-way communication, unlike board meetings where we're not able to answer questions, we are able to get those questions answered. And any question that we didn't answer, we will make sure that we provide those answers as long as you gave your email address. In terms of last evening, we really were able to address a lot of the updates on our return to learn plans. We'll share a few of those updates with you this evening as well. If anyone did not have an opportunity to view that town hall, it is on the PCCS YouTube channel, and you can make sure to take a look at that at your leisure. Just a quick update that our back-to-school registration is open. It's required for all K-12 families. This is an online back-to-school registration. It's a process that's required for all students kindergarten through twelfth grades, grade. It helps you to easily update your medical and demographic and contact information, which is really so critical right now while we're in this remote space. You log into the MyStar parent portal and look for the red back-to-school registration link. It's in the upper right-hand corner of the screen. If you are completing your back-to-school registration on a smartphone, you must do so using the MyStar mobile app. To download the MyStar app, please search Q Parent Connect in your app store. And if you don't have your password or your PIN, you can use your reset your password link on the parent connection login page to retrieve and or change that information. Tonight, we want to spend some time during this report, just providing you with some valuable updates. One big piece of update is some legislative updates, and so I will walk you through just some recent legislative updates. Once again, we'll not have all of the answers. This information is really new to us, but we will figure it out together, and it's very important that we provide you this information in real time, and we'll address your your questions as they go. Also, this evening, after providing that update for the legislative updates, we'll also share a little bit about student schedules. Our teachers and administrative teams have been working collaboratively on what I believe are some very thoughtful and student-focused schedules for our students this school year, and we'll walk you through some samples of that this evening. They really have achieved some of our goals that we've set out to achieve as a school district, and I'm proud of the work that our teams have done together. Also, talk about a little summer professional development opportunities that our our staff has been engaged in to ready themselves for our remote learning. Finally, we'll look at a few financial updates that we think it's important to share. And then final information on our virtual academy. So by beginning, I'll just talk to you about some legislative updates. The House bills fifty-nine eleven, fifty-nine twelve and fifty-nine thirteen were signed by the governor, and these outline requirements for schools on attendance, testing and communication with students and parents for the upcoming school year. As I said, tonight, I'm going to talk through some of the major items that are in this bill package. If you have questions, I may have some of the answers, and I may have to get back to you with some of the answers. I will say, some of these requirements are a step in the right direction. We've really been looking and concerned about pupil count and our hours of attendance, for example, and those are addressed in the bill. But others are actually making the jobs of our local teachers and administrators, even our board members more difficult as they take us away from really the important work that we need to do in terms of addressing the needs of our students. I know that we will get through them, because that's what we do here in PCCS. Just talking through a couple of important areas, one is being pupil count. As you know, we've all been concerned about the uncertainty that the school year can bring as parents are exercising choice. Some are choosing to homeschool, some are choosing to go to other school districts that are beginning with a face-to-face program on September the eighth. Realizing that concern across the state, as a part of this legislation that was passed, there is going to be a new formula that is going to allow a mix or a blend, which is going to use seventy-five percent of last year's student count and twenty-five percent of this year's student count in order to come up with our formula for state aid. It's actually a little bit more complicated than that, and Debbie will talk about it a little later. But basically with the seventy-five percent, it's going to be ninety percent of the fall twenty nineteen, ten percent of spring twenty nineteen, plus for the twenty-five percent, it's ninety percent of fall twenty twenty and spring of twenty twenty. And so that gives us a little piece, because this formula is really aiming to help us with some more stability in terms of our funding stream for the next school year by placing more of the weight on previous and known numbers. So right now, when we look at that formula, we know three of those four numbers, and that is something that will help us get started with this school year. Looking at the extended continuity of learning plan requirements in order to receive state aid funding for the twenty twenty twenty-one school year, now districts will be required to develop an extended continuity of learning plan. You all recall that back in the spring, we completed our continuity of learning plan. We had to submit submit that to our ISD. In addition to our previous plan and our COVID-19 preparedness response plan that you just approved on August eleven, now the extended plan must include a lot of information. So I'll walk you through that. It'll be the necessity of the plan. That's going to be a statement that really says, why is this plan necessary to increase student achievement for the twenty twenty-one school year? We have to set educational goals as a part of the plan. Now, we, these goals can be aligned with our school improvement goals, but they're looking at what can be achieved for this school year, really thinking about what they defined as during this pandemic learning. Increased pupil achievement, or if growth can be reliably measured using benchmark assessments, will be required. Growth on those benchmark assessments will need to be reported. That's going to be in the aggregate as well as for all subgroups. We also are going to be expected as a district to provide an insurance that we must choose one of the benchmark assessments that's aligned with the state standards. And for us, we are using NWEA. So once we get more information on which benchmark is allowable, and we are hopeful that NWA will be one of those benchmarks. We will have measurability through the benchmarks assessments, as just was described above. We need to, in our plan, talk about our mode of instruction, and this could be if we're using a hybrid model, if we're going We need to in our plan, talk about our mode of instruction and this could be if we're using a hybrid model, if we're going completely remote, if we're doing in-person learning, whatever mode we choose to educate our students will need to continue to define that. We have to recertify this plan every thirty calendar days. And recertification means that you as a board of education must reconfirm the method of instruction that's going to be delivered and approve this plan as we go forward. So we'll have to make sure at each board member meeting, we have an opportunity to present any updates. And then you would then have to approve that and reconfirm that once again before we forward that over to our ISD. In terms of our academic standards, the ECOL plan must include a description of how instruction and the core academic areas will expose each student to the academic standards that apply to each student's grade level or courses in the same scope and sequence as the district had planned for exposure had our students been in in-person instruction. And we'll also have to give a description of how pupil progress towards the mastery of these standards will be graded or otherwise reported to our students and families. As a part of our extended learning plan, we must also talk about equitable access. And we must share how we as a district are going to make sure that all of our students are provided with equitable access to technology and to the internet. We have to have a description of how we are going to ensure that our students with disabilities are also provided with the instructional accommodations that they need in order to be compliant with the state and federal law. There are some health and safety guidelines that are going to be required of us in this legislation. In consultation, which we are already doing with our local health department and school district employees, we must develop district-wide guidelines or methods for delivering your instruction that are based on local data and key metrics as we've been talking about already. We'll look, we'll have to be required to look at the trends of covid nineteen cases or positive tests, hospitalizations, the numbers of deaths, the covid cases for each day for every one million people, the percentage of positive covid test over a four-week period. We have to look at healthcare capacity strength, testing, tracing, containment of infrastructure in regard to covid nineteen. Also, as a part of this legislation, anytime we are considering to return to in-person instruction, they are asking that we make K five students a priority to transitioning into in-person learning. There's some date in terms of requirements, by October the first, the plan must be submitted to the ISD. So if we think about our own timelines here internally, our board meeting on September the fifteenth will be a good opportunity to give an update so that we can then confirm any information, reconfirm information as a board. And we can submit that by October the first and those approved plans. Once they're submitted, I think the ISD at that time will submit those to the state treasurer and the state superintendent. We will also have continue with the requirement to post our approved plans October the first and then again on February the first to our website. By the end of the school year, the district will be required to post all of our information on our benchmark assessments. Except our local benchmarks, this will have to be posted on our webpage. When we think about those benchmark assessments, the first requirement is the first set of benchmark assessments must take place within the first nine weeks of school. So as I said, there are a lot of requirements in this new legislation that will put more burden on our teachers and our local schools. We will get it done, but they're just, it will take us, as I said, away from the work that we need to be doing in terms of focusing on helping this important worker, giving our students what they need academically, but we will get it done. In terms of student attendance, this is, I would say, a positive that came from the legislation for the twenty twenty-one school year. In order to not forfeit state aid, the district has to ensure that at least one monthly two-way communication occurs between at least seventy-five percent of the students and their teachers all school year. And this interaction must be relevant to the course and progress of our content. So we'll talk with our staff about taking attendance. We will take daily attendance. It is expected that our students participate in our synchronous learning, but we need to make sure that we can document at least one monthly two-way interaction that's occurring to make sure that we don't forfeit our state aid. Another positive is the days and hours requirement. Our current law says that schools must provide ten hundred, one thousand ninety-eight hours and a hundred and eighty days of instruction each year. For the twenty twenty-one school year only, the bill will waive this requirement. For the twenty twenty-one school year only, however, districts must provide distance learning that results in the same number of hours and days necessary in order to deliver that same content that would have been delivered in a hundred and eighty days or ten ninety-eight hours in which the school district would have been meeting in face-to-face learning. So that is something that will be helpful for us in terms of that requirement. When you look at the schedules a little bit later, that really gives us that flexibility to make sure that we are meeting our students' needs. But have some flexibility in not having to have students sit in front of a computer for the entire six and a half hours of the day. A positive that came out of this in terms of the assessments, the kindergarten readiness assessment will be suspended for the twenty twenty-one school year. However, we have different assessments, as I shared, that under the bill, students are, or the district is going to have to administer to students, all students kindergarten through eighth grade, a standardized or a local benchmark assessment. And once again, that first assessment has to take place within the first nine weeks of school. By June thirtieth, all districts have to send all aggregate data excluding the local benchmarks to a local data hub. By August first, twenty twenty-one, MDE will provide aggregate statewide reports to the governor and to the Senate and House Education Committee. They've developed what they call a pandemic learning study. And the idea, I believe, behind this learning study is to really isolate best practices that are used across the state for pandemic learning. So they're going to assess our distant distance learning programs to see what's effective in achieving our goals, how our programs are operating, what best practices that we are using as a district. And they also will ask that we note any ineffective distance learning models. A lot of information kind of came, we didn't have a lot of information about this bill. I think the first blush came Friday night and it was approved in the Senate on Saturday morning and then by the House on Monday. A lot of requirements. Once again, I always stand firm behind PCCS. I know we will rise to the occasion. But what I will say as I bring closure to this area, we continue to just urge our legislature and I would urge our community to support us and voice your opinion to our legislator legislature as well. To just now focus on giving schools what we need in terms of the resources to cover our significant costs that we're going to face in terms of reopening right now safely and supporting our students. Our students' social emotional needs, their academic needs, their behavioral needs, the whole student that we need to educate as we're teaching in this pandemic. So right now, we need a budget and we are hopeful that we can move in that direction. So with that, it's just a brief look at the legislative updates. I'd like to turn the presentation over or my time over to, right now, to Ms. Beth Rail, our chief academic officer, to share some of the work that we've been doing on our student schedules as well as some professional development activities.
Superintendent Merritt just kind of foreshadowed a little bit. One of the things that we were, we've been really waiting on is some of that legislation around people clock hours and and days and people accounting pieces. So in a, and I'm going to ask Mr. Brandon to pull up the elementary schedule. This is a look into the third grade learning schedule. So one of the things we recognized from the beginning is the importance of having flexibility for our families who have some additional needs with their schedules at home, to be able to really support them asynchronously or independently for students who have a difficult time or can't really access content and live instruction with teachers. One of the problems that we've had as we've worked through this is the fact that we had some pretty tight language around people accounting. What you're seeing now is the schedule that has been developed over, over several, several weeks between building administrators, district administrators, teacher teams. But what we're really looking for is solid blocks of time where teachers do live synchronous instruction with students. But also provide supports for independent asynchronous time during that time as well. So for example, what does this mean? What this means is our teachers will be creating videos to provide to our families about that asynchronous or that synchronous time so that families can also, who can't attend live, also have the opportunity to engage in that time. What you're seeing in this schedule, this is a third grade sample, the morning is really set about taking attendance, connecting with each other, doing some of that social emotional learning. We recognize that our students have been out of school for a long time and also have social emotional needs. So those reconnection needs, those team building, those collaborative experiences together. In the morning, you see a block of time where we do reading and writing workshop, an English language arts block of time where we do some targeted mini lessons. Also during that time, teachers will work with small groups and one-on-one time to meet with their teacher to really support that block. Throughout the day, you're also going to see several other things. A number of times asynchronously, and I'll talk about asynchronous and live support in just a minute. But also then some check-in periods, some small group work times, just like any other day, lunch and recess. And then in the afternoon, there's an additional block of time where we come together live to do math work. In the afternoon, you're also going to see specials built in. So at our elementary, we're looking at art, music, physical education and technology. And those specials are built in to ensure that students have as close an experience as possible to what they're going to see when we return to learning in person. Now, when we start the year, we're going to be starting those asynchronously as well. But throughout all of this timeframe, throughout the entire workday, teachers will be available for live support. Classroom teachers will be available for live support with the exception of lunch and recess at the elementary and during times when specials teachers are doing specials during the block of time where specials fall in. But throughout this entire day, lots of live support is available for our students. So that's an example of the, the elementary schedule. And again, classroom teachers and support teachers are going to work collaboratively to meet the needs of all of our students and throughout the day, they will be available for live support. Nick, if you want to bring up the secondary schedule, please. As we look at the secondary schedule, there are a number of things that we were trying, that the team was really trying to get to as they looked at this period of time and some things we could do differently to, to help support our high school and middle school students. One of which has been talked about a lot, which is how can we provide a later start for our students? So the team worked diligently to get to a block schedule that also allowed us to do that late, later start. It also allowed us to align the middle and high school schedule. And as soon as I'm done talking about the schedule, I'm going to ask Anthony Ruela to come in and he's going to share a little bit about how zero hour is going to work in this schedule. But as we look at this block schedule, some really interesting conversation came out from the teams. And as people started really talking with each other and generating ideas, a very creative, unique schedule that is very student-centered came forward during those conversations. Oftentimes, when you see a block, you'll see either a large chunk of time. So for example, you might see a hundred and twenty minutes for first hour, then the same as second hour, same in third hour. Or you might see something that looks like a one, two, three throughout, you know, all throughout the day. Or you'll see one, two, three in the morning, four, five, six in the afternoon. What the team came forward with, which was very supportive of student learning is this block of time where in the morning, each class will meet synchronously and do some face-to-face and live work, well, not face-to-face, but live work together throughout each periods, one, two and three. And in the afternoon, they'll circle back together to do small group support, extension, be available to really layer on what happened in those morning sessions. So you'll see on A days, Monday and Thursdays, first, second and third hours meet. They meet in the morning and then they come back together and meet in the afternoon. And then Tuesdays and Fridays is a B day where fourth, fifth and sixth periods meet again in the morning. And then touch base in the afternoon and are available for extensive live support in the afternoon. Wednesdays are a day that aligns where all of the classes meet. And in the morning on Wednesdays, there's some really cool setting where for twenty-five minutes in the morning, teachers meet to do advisory, social emotional work or MTSS. And we've talked about MTSS at the board level before, but MTSS is really that multi-tiered system of support. Here's where we get to those extensive supports for students and also extensions for our students. And then if you can scroll that up a little bit, Nick. In the afternoon, throughout the rest of the day, there's forty-five minute touch, uh, sessions where teachers leave those small group supports. They do a lot of extension activities. And again, available for live support throughout the day. So this helps us get to some of those things where we can really extend our learning, but also helps to enhance what we do and it's very student-centered. I'm going to ask Anthony Ruela to come in right now and talk about zero hour and, and explain how we're going to be doing zero hour in this, in the schedule.
Thank you, Ms. Rail. So students who attend zero hour at PSEP are either eighth graders who are taking advanced math or world language or sixth, seventh and eighth graders who are enrolled in orchestra. So our eighth grade students who are going to be enrolled in advanced math or world languages at PSEP will be scheduled into first hour for these courses. That way, they're, they'll be with their PSEP teacher that's teaching the world language or, or advanced math course. And when we return to face-to-face, these students will be able to continue to attend that first hour class at PSEP as they would have done in the past when we were face-to-face for their math or world language class before the start of their middle school day. Again, just as in the past when we return to face-to-face and we can do that when we schedule.
Ms. Rail, maybe you can finish where he was, just in case we lost him.
Sure, um, what, yeah, I believe we did lose him. So, and what we're looking at with the other cohort of zero hour students is our orchestra class and looking at that at the end of the day and how we will support that. Mr. Ruela has been working extensively with the principals at the middle school, high school at PSEP and with our, our orchestra teachers to help support this. And they're, they're in the home stretch of helping ensure that we allow all of the experiences for our students.
And, and I'm sorry for, for dropping off there with the internet. I'm not quite sure where, where we left off. Or, or what we need to wrap up with, but I was talking about sixth, seventh and eighth graders enrolled in orchestra. So that's, that zero hour will be occurring when we are in safe start and students are distance learning at the end of the school day. And then when we return to face-to-face, that orchestra meeting time will return to the zero hour that we've known in the past. So sorry about that.
So it's kind of like a teaching and learning thing, I think. I did that last week.
Right. I picked you up and you picked me up this time. So I appreciate it. Thank you.
So as we kind of shift back into the presentation, we'll talk a little bit about some of the awesome work that our teachers have been doing over the course of the summer. So there have been a number of professional development opportunities throughout the summer. Optional voluntary professional development opportunities, one of which is the PCCS Summer Learning Series. And this has allowed teachers to attend some PD in the following areas. Designing virtual learning environments, key aspects of teaching an online class, of teaching an online class, assessing remotely, strategies for engagement in a remote environment, using digital tools for classroom collaboration and designing learning in Canvas. Over the course of six days in August, fifty-six sessions have been available with additional live support from nationally recognized facilities. More importantly, our integrated technology team has been creating the digital learning hub along with providing a number of live virtual trainings on Canvas and Zoom since August twelfth. At the present time, there have been two thousand six hundred and seventy-seven active participants in these trainings. And a participant is late, is means each person attending one session equals one active participant. So if a teacher were to attend all three of these, that counts as three different participants. So just wanted, I want to be clear on what that two thousand six hundred and seventy-seven is. We are so immensely grateful to and proud of our teachers for spending time this summer preparing to teach remotely this fall. And we really want to publicly thank them for their dedication. And with that, we are going to hand it over to Debbie Piaz, Chief Financial Officer.
Thanks, Beth. There were a number of financial updates that occurred in the last several weeks. And the August consensus revenue estimating conference occurred yesterday. So I want to have just a few moments to update you on those events as well. So for the two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty fiscal year. Um, so for the 2019, 2020 fiscal year, we had $175 per pupil reduction, which was a reduction in our unrestricted state aid. Of course, that occurred in July after the board had already adopted their 1920 school year budgets. So that's going to be, um, a, a variance uh, when we come back and present the audited financial statements yet this fall. In 2021, um, there'll be two positive things that occurred, one of which was a $350 per pupil relief funds. Um, that's, uh, in this district is about $6 million. But, um, what they did was, um, gave us restricted federal funds, uh, with guidance still pending. So they took away unrestricted state aid and gave us restricted federal funds in place of not complaining, except for still waiting on the guidance. Um, uh, to spend those dollars. In addition, there was also a $12.32 per pupil or about $214,000 in restricted federal fund for COVID costs. I believe that's going to be, um, to reimburse us per se for our PPE. But I'm going to tell you right now that that's probably not going to be enough to cover that, that, uh, those costs. As Ms. Merritt alluded to earlier this evening, there's been a change in membership and the definition thereof. And so it's 75% of the prior year and 25% of the current year. We call it a super blend. Cause as, um, the 75% of the prior year is a 90%, as she stated, uh, 2019 fall and a 10% uh, 2019 spring. And then the current year will be a 90% fall of 2020 and a 10% spring of 2020, um, as well. So, uh, it's still important to have student count. That's still by the, the mechanism by which we are paid, um, through state aid. And so, um, our count date this year will be October the 4th. Last but not least, yesterday during the August consensus revenue estimating conference, very rare event. Um, usually every year, there's a January revenue estimating conference as well as a May revenue estimating conference. Those conferences are where the executive branch or the governor's, uh, department marries with the Senate fiscal and the House fiscal. And all three come together to have consensus over where the state finances are. This year, um, it's not as good as January, but not as bad as May. So we're, um, hopeful. The school aid fund, um, was significantly impacted by COVID-19. Um, but, and not to this extent that they originally estimated in May. Income taxes and the withholding thereof, um, held somewhat in that there was withholding on the unemployment that people were given. Uh, and so that wasn't as, um, negatively impacted as originally thought. And state sales tax, I don't know about you, but everybody went out to the home improvement stores and spent some money on home improvements, decks and, uh, paint and all that kind of stuff. And that helped the sales tax rate. Um, not to the extent that it was harmed by, um, theaters, um, restaurants, bars, all those things, um, closing. Um, but, uh, it did help somewhat as well as the grocery and food sector. So those two were positives, causing a, a positive result for the school aid fund. Two caveats I want to remind you, um, there, there is still a second stimulus, federal stimulus package being discussed in Washington and it has not been resolved. As well as the flip water settlement that was announced at $600 million that needs to be, um, provided for in the state, um, the state budget. Therefore, we're seeking a restoration of that $175 per pupil, um, reduction that they took away. Our hope is that, uh, we'll have a flat foundational allowance, but we won't know until the board, until the legislature meets, um, in September to, um, finalize the state budget for the 2021 year. Next up. I believe Kurt Tiscwitz is going to talk about the virtual academy and the enrollment.
Thank you, Debbie. Just a correction, the official count day is Wednesday, October 7th, not the 4th. Um, also I just wanted to mention that, uh, as Ms. Merritt said, our virtual academy had, uh, quite, uh, a success in terms of the number of students that expressed interest in there. Uh, for your information tonight, we have our elementary students. Uh, we had 1,671 students in our elementary, uh, grades select the virtual academy. For our middle school, we had eight, uh, 985 students who opted to go into our virtual academy. And at our high school, we had our, uh, uh, high school students, 1,223 students selected for a total of 3,879 students total that selected our virtual academy. Um, as of this morning, uh, we have worked to, uh, staff all of our virtual academy students and, uh, our safe start, uh, uh, numbers as well. So our staffing is at the point where we can, uh, begin to create schedules for students and develop their, uh, class schedules. Um, we will continue to maintain a waitlist. We did have a waitlist, uh, after the application period closed. Uh, we maintained a waitlist and we were able to, uh, place everyone that was on the waitlist, uh, into the virtual academy this morning. So we will continue to create a waitlist or maintain a waitlist for those families that would like to try this option at the end of the trimester or the semester, uh, depending on the level. So thank you very much. And next up, I believe it is. Back to.
That's me.
Okay, back to Ms. Merritt. Thank you.
Playing a soup's report. I just give updates, but, um, with all of the information that was, was shared, I'd like to, uh, open up for any board questions that you may have.
Is there anybody that has questions about this? Yeah, Patrick, uh, Doug, Kate. Uh, okay, we'll start with Doug. Go ahead.
Yeah, this was on, uh, just the, the percent, the enrollment for, uh, the academy. Uh, you gave some numbers. So I was just wondering what the percentage of the, in the individual grades and then the total percentage of students expected to return.
It was approximately 20% um, at the, uh, uh, district level, uh, broken down by elementary, middle and high school. I'd have to get that information for you. I don't have.
Okay. That's good. Thanks. That's it.
Kate.
Thank you. Um, this is, I think for Anthony and, um, you may have answered it when we couldn't hear you, but, um, I want to check, um, for the middle school students who are taking a zero hour class. Um, the way, um, most of them have been scheduled in the past is that they actually had seven classes. So what happens to that seventh class for them?
So actually it is kind of dependent. So the orchestra kids have all been, um, scheduled for seven classes. But for students, um, that are taking either a world language or advanced math at the park, uh, that actually has not always been the case. Uh, part of it has depended upon transportation, uh, back and forth. Um, and sometimes even, uh, when students have returned in time, families have said, you know what? I really don't, uh, want my students to have seven classes, right? Like six classes is, is about all they can manage. So that actually hasn't always been the case. Um.
I said usually.
Yeah, it, it doesn't, but, um, and in this situation, uh, it would be where, uh, students who are in orchestra would have seven classes. But students who were taking, uh, advanced math or world language would have six classes.
So then what happens when they go back to face-to-face instruction?
So it will remain the same, uh, in the buildings when students, uh, come back to their middle schools from the high school. Um, there will be, we will provide supervi- supervision for them, um, before they move on to their second hour class.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
All right, Patrick.
And in the town hall yesterday, Ms. Merritt mentioned that the schedule that was provided would be the same schedule that would be done when we go back to school in, uh, in person in small groups or whatever happens as we return to school. And I'm a little confused on how that would work with the zero hour and the other processes that we've discussed. Also how that would work logistically with respect to transportation and how we can even transport small groups of, of students into school. Um, with, uh, without a, in, without additional, uh, buses in that process.
So, uh, just to be clear in terms of my answer was, uh, talking about the possibility. So nothing has been finalized in terms of a schedule for return. But with, and that was only speaking for the 2021 school year with the, um, suspension of the 1098 hours, 180 days, it would allow us some flexibility that we may be able to have some late start for, um, once we return face-to-face, which would be just a change in the entire, uh, um, start times for like secondary school. I think it's 50, I mean, uh, middle school, we need 50 minutes in between buses. So we could adjust that, uh, face-to-face schedule, um, because the students wouldn't have to necessarily be in the, uh, buildings in a face-to-face environment for that year for the full six and a half hours that they are. So it gives us some flexibility, creativity for that year to explore those options that where our transportation wouldn't necessarily have to be impacted. It could really help us to make some decisions long-term. Um, if we, if that is something that really works for our district, uh, would that be an investment that we would want to move forward? Um, once the 1098, uh, is back in play, um, more than likely in the 2021, 21, 22 school year.
Great. Thank you very much. And I appreciate, uh, the creativity and flexibility that we're, uh, that we're showing here. Um, to both adjust the school start times as well as try to make sure that we support those students with, uh, with zero hour and other conditions. Thank you.
Okay, Anupam, did you have questions?
I did, actually. It was, uh, followed up. It was, um, asked by Kate, followed up by Patrick with the zero hour. Um, just making sure that students don't lose any options or opportunities for the extra credit that they, uh, would get. Um, I also want to echo what Patrick just said with regard to the creativity the administration has shown. Um, and the thinking around the, the creative schedules of the, starting at eight o'clock. Also the block scheduling time, knowing that, uh, focusing on those core concepts for hours one, two and three, and following up in the afternoon, sounds like a really good, interesting plan. And I'm looking forward to the data on that. So, um, Anthony, just help me better understand with the zero hour to make sure that students don't lose the opportunity for the extra credit, the course credit that they would normally have. And when they transition back to the face-to-face classroom, what would happen to them? Could you just describe that a little bit more?
Um, you know, it's, it's really hard to say right now, um, because we'd have to look at schedules and, um, at each building and, and within the eighth grade, right? So what courses students already have. Um, and so it might be different, for example, for math than it would be for foreign language. Um, and in terms of the FTE at the buildings, um, and, and the, the teachers and the courses and the size of those classes. So, um, when we know how many students are coming back, um, to those, to that situation, to the building, then we'd be able to be more and, and creative, like you said, right? So we want to look at the individual situations and then be creative around it.
We lost you again, Anthony.
So I can kind of layer on a little bit too. And it's really, as we are moving towards, um, phasing in, we'll, we'll be communicating very early with families to figure out what their, you know, where, what their planning is. And especially on the other side of that as well with the virtual academy students, because we want to know and make a seamless transition for all students. So we want to be able to, uh, uh, provide them all the opportunities possibly can. Looks like Anthony's back on. I was just talking about the transition back, especially as we look at virtual academy and stuff as well.
Is, is there anything else that I, uh, can add or any, any follow-up there? I'm sorry about the connection today.
That's all. Thank you.
Uh, John, do you have any questions? Okay, um, I, I had questions that were, um, completely answered, but it was mostly about the zero hour. A lot of the people in the community had been writing in today about, um, that when they saw that middle school and high school were going to be starting at the same time. Um, because if your child is taking one of those classes, it's very important to you. Um, I had a child who did the orchestra, which is an awesome program. Um, and then I also had some questions today about, um, parents who were, children have been put on the waiting list for the virtual academy. And that was also answered. So thank you very much. Uh, we really appreciate this update. It was very informative. Pardon me? Oh. And Patrick has one more question?
Actually, I have a few questions. So, um, my, my next question is around the presentation that was done for the town hall, the sample schedules that were provided yesterday and today. Um, the presentation that was done today, they're not in our board packet. Um, they're not posted on the district website. Will we be getting copies of those?
Um, actually Diane has uploaded that because it's my soup's report, we normally wouldn't have a presentation. So she has uploaded and refreshed the packet. So it's available and that will be a part of, um, forever record.
Does that include the, um, the schedules as well?
Those are links to the schedules on there. Uh, with the schedules, they still are in process. That's why we're using the term sample schedules. Um, working in collaboration with our PCEA just because we have an adjustment, looking at that block schedule. Uh, so they are going through that, uh, process that would allow us to move forward with the letter of agreement, um, uh, to implement that schedule. So those are available, still has the word sample and we'll, uh, make those, we finish that process fine.
Thank, thank you very much. Um, I have other questions for, if other people have them, then I'm happy to rotate.
Uh, okay, go ahead, Anupam.
Uh, actually, uh, Patrick, Patrick triggered something. I want to applaud Superintendent Merritt and her team for organ- organizing a wonderful town hall, um, yesterday and being very thorough with answering all of the questions that the community had. And I'm wondering if there are plans to do another town hall, whether it's a week from now or two weeks from now when school starts. What are your plans for that?
So, uh, definitely I can start and Mr. Brandon can give some details. Uh, definitely would like to keep that going frequently as we talk about that idea of two-way communication. As I said early on, just our, uh, policies around the board meetings, it's, we're not able to respond. So that really does give us an opportunity for people to get their questions answered in real time. So we would like to continue, uh, that forum, not just at the start of the school, but I'm sure we'll continue to have needs for communications, uh, throughout the year. And so even, um, more frequently, did we did the coffees with Monica, for example, quarterly, but this would give us an opportunity to really to continue to run these town halls in a more frequent, uh, basis.
Thank you. I know the community will really appreciate that. Thank you.
Uh, does anybody else? Wait. Anybody else besides Patrick? Okay, go ahead, Patrick.
Great. So my next. I'm sorry, the, the, I really appreciate you posting the presentation. Uh, there are no links to the schedule on there. So can we get an updated version that has links to the schedule?
Yes, we can do that. We can link those in there right now.
Okay, great. Thank you. And then my next question is, um, for, uh, for Ms. Piaz on, on the correct, uh, conversation. You mentioned that, uh, the legislator, legislature is meeting in September to finalize this. And hopefully that will get us a, a budget that we can reconcile against what we're doing this year. But I also heard you say that you, you were hoping for, um, reimbursement for the 175 as well as keeping the budget flat. If I remember correctly, we have actually passed a, uh, a budget expecting a deficit or a decline in our state aid by up to $500, um, per pupil. Are we expecting that actually to be flat this year?
So when I referenced budget, I was not referencing the PCCS budget. I was referencing the state budget. So as you know, the state of Michigan is a nine 30 year end. They have yet to adopt a budget starting October the 1st. So I hope that they would, um, do so, uh, quickly in the month of September so that we can start planning our year uh, based on what numbers that they provide. Um, so in addition to that, my comment was to, I guess our budget actually adopted a $650 per pupil reduction in state school aid. Um, as you know, 125 was taken, um, from us from the prior fiscal year. So I'm hoping that they will, um, produce a budget that is something south of or north of negative 650. Uh, that being said, there's a lot of things in, uh, flux. Um, the general fund is not in good shape. And the school aid fund is in a little bit better shape. So I worry that they will offset the one against the other and not give the additional resources to schools. And so I, I made a, a comment that I hoped, I hoped they would re, re, reinstate that 175 that they took um, to balance the 1920 school year.
Got it. So they have. Got it. So they haven't mentioned anything saying that they're going to give that back? Or there's no indications that it's going to be more or less than the 650? This was just our desire to make sure that our schools are properly funded.
Correct.
Okay, great. And then a related question to that discussion was, you mentioned on the $350 in restricted funds and the $12.32 per pupil in COVID costs. We had discussed previously in June that there was about $800,000 in CARES money that we were going to get. Is this in addition to that CARES money?
Correct. So we get CARES money that's currently in litigation because of the allocation method used to allocate it between Michigan Public Schools, K-12, and, uh, private schools. And so I'm hoping that litigation gets resolved as well. So we have some, um, more, uh, guidance on how to use those resources as well.
Great. Thank you. And then I think I have, uh, one, one or two more questions that no one else has any. Okay, great. So, um, for the virtual academy, uh, there was a great presentation yesterday on the town hall. And I really appreciate the questions and the answers as part of that. One of the things that was discussed in that was the, the, the enrollment and the assignment of teachers and what classes would be run and the desire to be able to support classes that students had actually signed up for as part of that. When will parents know that information since we've now been able to assign the teachers as part of that process?
They are working on this, uh, the staffing and the assignment this week. I think the target is Thursday. And then they'll be able to communicate those out to parents. Uh, Liz or Kurt, am I corrected that Thursday is being the target?
So Thursday is the target for us to place teachers in the virtual academy who have shared with us that they want to teach in the virtual academy. Every level, elementary, middle school and high school, we have different timelines we're working on. But if you are asking Patrick, when will a student have their exact schedule? That is going to take some more time. So the first thing that we're doing right now is we're placing all the teachers in the virtual academy that have requested to be in it. We're seeing how we can find them a spot. And then the next piece of it is every level is working on the scheduling piece that needs to take place.
Fantastic. So I appreciate that. And I, I'm, I'm excited about the, the community's interest in this program. I think that they, they've, they've shown a lot of interest in, in having this and I'm glad that we're able to offer this. One of the things that we discussed, um, at the last board meeting, I think the last board meeting, we discussed that if there were classes that they had signed up for that could not be offered in the virtual academy, that they could revert back to safe start if, if those were crucial to their, uh, to their education plan. So just to help people manage their expectations around when overall schedules as well as virtual academy schedules will come out. And if they have to make those adjustments, wh- when will they know what classes are going to be offered in that virtual academy?
Yeah, I could talk, uh, briefly about that, Patrick. I know as early as, uh, or as late as this evening, our counselors are working, uh, um, and manually scheduling kids into classes. And, um, there are some, uh, particular students, for example, some of the IB classes that our students uh, would not be able to take part in if they were in the virtual academy. So I worked with, uh, Sherry Steckel, the principal at, uh, Plymouth High School and Casey Swanson to, uh, to make those adjustments as needed.
Got it. And so again, I just trying to manage people's expectations, um, and not create a, a flood of, 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 of exceptions that might occur at the end. Are we looking at a week? Um, you know, when, when will people know whether the classes that they'd signed up for in their normal schedule are going to be available in the virtual academy?
Yeah, I can tell you that the, the counselors are individually doing them and are addressing concerns as we speak. So they are, uh, working as fast as they can.
So perfect. So just to make sure I understand that. So as exceptions are identified, they're working those in real time. They're not waiting until a specific date to communicate that. So, you know, this is a continuous process. So it won't be a big bang where everything is communicated. It's all being done as the counselors work the specific student schedule.
That's correct.
Oh, good. Okay. Thank you very much. I really appreciate that, that explanation. And then I had uh, another question on the schedules. What is our current time for recess at the elementary level?
Now, when you have the elementary level, um, recess takes place between 20 to 30 minutes, but it's about 20 minutes per day.
So I'm a little bit nervous about the schedule that we presented here at the elementary. Is it 20 minutes to 30 minutes per day or per session? Cause there's usually a morning and an afternoon recess, correct?
I'm going to let Maureen Malloy reply to your question because she's on that. I thought you were referring to second recess, but I think now you're asking about lunch recess as well as second recess. So I will let Maureen reply.
I, I guess, and again, it's been a long time since I've been in school at the elementary level. But there used to be a morning recess, a lunch recess and an afternoon recess. If there's only, can you, can you tell me what the times of the recesses that we have right now are? So that we can understand how they work at the elementary level.
Hi, I'm sorry. I was, I was having difficulty. Um, so elementary typically has lunch, a recess connected to lunch. And then an afternoon recess for about 20 minutes. Um, the lunch recess is about 25 minutes. So they're eating for about 25 minutes. They're outside for about 25 minutes. And then the afternoon, it's 20 minutes or so, um, with transition. Um, so what we have done in the virtual schedule is we have connected some time, you know, where we're recommending taking breaks and going outside with the parent permission or the supervision, um, of their caregiver. And we've just chunked it out throughout the day so that there are smaller chunks as opposed to blocks of time with, you know, teacher supervising. So that would be adjusted when they return to school, um, to go back to a more traditional, um, schedule.
Got it. So I just, I was a little bit nervous about the only 10 minutes of breaks that occur in the morning and the afternoon. Yes, you have the lunch, but it seems like an awful lot of time for students to be actively engaged in learning without a, a, a break at the elementary level.
Yeah. And our teachers are very sensitive to that. And, and you know, we have, um, we have learning to do and we'll have to take some leads from our children in front of us. And as we move through this, that's why these are called samples. And we will make adjustments on the times. The sequence of the experiences and the learning will stay consistent for families so they can plan. There may be some adjustments on the time as we, as we work to understand who the students in front of us and what their needs are. So definitely, um, I trust that the teachers are going to make those adjustments based on what experiences they're having with the students in front of them. So.
Okay, fantastic. I appreciate that flexibility. Um, the, the other question I had with respect to schedules is it looks like, in particular at the secondary level, it's about three hours of primary instruction and then small group time that, that happens on, on each day. Is, is, is that my understanding of that correct?
Yes, that, that is, uh, that is correct. That's the goal.
Okay. And is, is that enough time for us to cover all the, the content areas that we, that we need to do for students? I, I'm not familiar enough with how it actually works in a normal, um, day-to-day classroom. And will that be enough time for them to cover all the content and curriculum areas?
One of the things that, um, is important to think about is that, uh, within those times, there's going to be synchronous and asynchronous activities. So there are going to be things that students are going to be working on, um, individually and in small groups outside of the face-to-face sit-down interaction with their teachers. So it's going to be a little bit different, um, than maybe students and families have experienced before. But in terms of, um, the, the coverage and, and the, the goal is that the students are engaged in those, those activities that will, um, cover, expose them to deep understanding of the standards.
Okay, good. Thank you. And then, um, Ms. Rail talked about the, um, how the, the synchronous sessions would be recorded. And then in the town hall, they discussed about students that were, um, out sick, would have the ability to get the content that would be provided in those synchronous sessions. And that it may not be, um, a video recorded by their teacher. Can you give some more detail around how that process is going to work? Are we recording specific, uh, teachers in certain subject areas so that there's a, a consistency in the lesson that, that's provided? But it might not be your teacher? Or how, how exactly is that being done?
Uh, and I'm, I'm maybe missing something from the live, from the town hall. But the, the teachers will be recording their sessions. So what I said was it may not be the live session. So a teacher may, um, record themselves prior to the live session. So it may not necessarily be when it took place live in that classroom. Teacher would have the option to be able to record the session that he or she would be, or that they would be doing live in the classroom. So I, I think maybe that helps make a little more clarification of that. So for example, during, during my, during my prep hour, I might choose to create a video rather than, um, doing it while I'm live with students.
Got it. Okay. That makes a lot more sense. So are they doing that for every synchronous live session that they're doing?
Yes, they're going to be working on it for the, for the live portions of the, of the sessions that they'll be doing. Or, um, they could also be creating an equivalent, uh, experience for students as long as the students are able to get the equivalent of the content. But, you know, primarily it will be our teachers creating them for the content that they're teaching in the class.
Okay, that's fantastic. So with that, just to make sure I understand how this might work. If my student was out sick and was not able to attend that particular day, they could still catch up on those synchronous, uh, those, uh, lives, or those synchronous sessions by accessing a video of that particular, uh, content, whether it was the teacher recording it while they did it live or pre-recording it or perhaps recording it afterwards to be able to support the, the, the lessons that were done in that particular class.
That's, and there also may be times when our teacher teams work together and, and create some videos as well. So think about, um, four teachers teaching the same English, uh, ELA experience. Then they can also collaborate together to help share that work as well. So.
I love, I love the creativity. That's, that's going to work super well, uh, well for, for those students that maybe have got a difficult schedule at home and don't have the support that they need or run into technical challenges. This will help them to not miss any, uh, any content. So I'm, I'm really excited to hear about this. Thank you.
Are we done?
I think I'm done.
Oh, perfect. Okay. So we have completed the superintendent's report. So we are on to finance and operations with Ms. Piaz.
Thank you very much. Um, this evening we have a few things on our first read agenda. The first of which is, uh, bond 2020, uh, progress report and presentation. This evening we have, um, Bill McCarthy from McCarthy and Smith. Uh, we have Bill Weinrock and Gail Oliveto from TMP. And they just want to provide some, uh, framing reminders, uh, to the community and the school board on what bond 2020 was, um, had, it had as its first projects, um, to move forward with. So we're just going to have a brief presentation by the, by, uh, Mr. McCarthy. And I believe Bill's going to start off.
Well, good evening. We're pretty excited to kind of talk about the 2020 bond program. So Bill Weinrock and myself will kind of collaborate on this presentation. So, and Ms. Brandon, can you kick off the next one? So hard to believe, uh, March 10th, the bond passed successfully. And then, uh, about six days later, we went into a COVID shutdown. So kind of a tough time, uh, not enough time to really celebrate. But really, um, since that period of time of shutdown, there's been a lot of, obviously the work that you've been doing has taken precedence. But behind the scenes, we have been planning some work to, to, to kind of expedite the, uh, the plan. So that's the what. Now the, kind of a little bit about the who, we go to the next slide. This is kind of the, the collaboration, the team partnership of the district, ourselves and TMP. And then TMP is being supported by, uh, a couple of, a few consultants as listed below. They're providing, Spalding Decker would be providing the civil engineering and survey work. SES Mechanical will be, uh, providing the mechanical electrical engineering and Councilman Huntsaker. For example, the nautatorium designer. So then we talk about the when a little bit. So to develop the when, we, we term that as kind of the, we, we call that roadmap, our program schedule. And when we were developing the program schedule, we kind of took a number of criteria into consideration. Those were getting buildings, uh, developing the secure entrances for those buildings in need. Uh, developing those buildings, uh, program entity, uh, equity across the district. So those buildings that needed some, some facets, addressing those early, addressing building capacity needs. And then looking at the various program initiatives that were also part of the program of the bond. And then also building infrastructural needs. And then another key category is the cash flow and, and, uh, monitoring the cash flow expenditures. 85% of the series needs to be expended within 36 months. And this bond is structured in three series. So that was another criteria to take into consideration when planning the work. The, the next slide. This is really fine print, but trust me, there's some, I won't dwell on here. But it, it's just to try to give you an overall view of what it is. And a program schedule is always subject to change. But it, it gives the team and the district an idea what, when the work could happen. And, and we kind of identify different phases of the work in the blue, which represents the design, the time it takes for design. The red is really the bidding and award phase. And then that little gap in between is really a pre-construction type timeframe where some middles are being done, contracts are being issued. And then you get into the green bar, which is kind of a representation of the onsite action activities and, and closeout activities. So at the very top of that schedule, there were three other bars designated. And those are just highlighting when those series of bonds and the values that they were going to be, were going to be, um, sold. So those are the other constraints. And at the bottom of the, of the bars, as we get down, there's also some blocks of money for, for transportation. Uh, and then, and the technology investments as well. And this is always a subject to change, but it gives us a good idea how this could work. And it's been iterated a number of times, and I'm sure it'll be iterated a few more as the project, as the program begins. But to, to, tonight is really to look at what are the first series, series one, 2021 projects are. So the, the next slide is really we bid package ES dash one, number ES one. And we call ES as for elementary school one, which would be Erickson Field and Halsing and Dodson Elementary, uh, schools. And why these buildings? Well, the, they have a need for secure entrances and those are complicated, uh, entrances. They weren't easily addressed in the previous bonds. They required additions. And so we wanted to get those, there was a desire to get those, uh, addressed. Building equity, these buildings, the three buildings also had, uh, they have existing, uh, gymnasium slash cafeteriums. And so they really want to get separate part of the program equity, construct a separate gymnasium additions. And then kind of set, create that separation of program. And then there was also a need for additional classroom space in the southern end of the district. And then it was really being encountered at, at Dodson. And so we looked at those three buildings. There's a lot of commonality with, within the three Erickson Field and Halsing. And then the Dodson building was pretty much a, a, a straight program for, for a four classroom addition. And what that program schedule would look like would be the next phase, next slide is really identifying these, these buildings. And we're looking at a September through December type timeframe. And then bidding and awarding in the January and February timeframe. And then so the construction can begin in an April through November type timeframe. And it's, that's kind of a, you know, it's an aggressive approach. We, we believe it, it's key to kind of focus in on this, on these projects. The good news is three of the buildings are very similar. So there's, I hate to, you know, for the architect's benefit, Bill's going to cringe. Uh, there is some efficiency. So we're not trying to create four separate products. There, there's three that are very similar in nature. So that's good. And then the fourth. So we're hoping to really, um, get after these, these projects. And then to kind of talk and kind of refresh the scope of these projects a little bit more, Bill, you want to go walk us through these buildings?
Thank you, Bill. So if you want to go to the next slide. You've all seen the slides before and, and just to reiterate the theme of the bond, one of the main things of the bond was equity. So in these plans, what we're trying to show is the equity amongst each of the buildings. And in the site plan, so Erickson Field and Halsing, these three sister buildings all have similar, uh, existing building footprints. Uh, we'll be looking at putting that secure entry on for the main entrance addition. That's where the secure entry will go. And then the gymnasium and, and two classrooms. This is something consistent with all three schools. Uh, again, it was show, uh, shown during our visioning sessions and the demographic information that the, uh, buildings were in need of, uh, additional classroom space. One thing we did point out is that these, uh, during the bond program is all of these. One thing we did point out is that these, during the bond program, is all of these buildings and these graphics are just a graphical representation. And once we start design, we'll be able to meet with the building staff, principals, stakeholders, and start looking at how these additions truly can go onto the building in the most efficient way. On the site plan, there will be part of the bond program. It's not just the, the building additions. We've got paving replacements. Up at the top of the screen, you'll see that there's a, a parent drop-off loop. All of these buildings do have traffic issues during arrival and dismissal times. So we're looking at the potential of taking the parking lot that is up adjacent to the gymnasium and turning that into a large parent drop-off to help queue the, the drive or the parents onsite, put the cars in a systematic order so that we improve safety and security onsite. And then that'll require a parking lot expansion that will go beyond the building. And each of the building site plans do show some form of this program. Next slide. We go to the floor plan. Again, this is just a graphic representation of where the gym classrooms would go. Key features on these plans that we wanted to point out is the new main entrance addition. If you look at the red box or the red area, if you go directly to the left, there's a, the existing main office. You can see that the main office is inborn in the school. So it was impossible at the time for us to go through and try to create the secure entrance where someone would walk directly into the building and, and have to enter the office specific. So this is a key theme for Erickson Field and Helsing. We will be renovating the old main office area into support space in the building. Also, within the building itself, I know there's a lot of white space. We wanted to highlight part of the visioning upgrades with the color. But the buildings are going to be getting flooring and ceilings and LED lighting. So there's a lot of improvements in these buildings that'll take place that is, again, district-wide equity. Next slide. We go to field, same program that we just discussed, parent drop-off loop, the main entry. We will be doing pavement replacements, roofing replacements, the gym and classrooms. Again, that's the combined, existing combined cafeteria and gym in the building. So we'll be separating the cafeteria and, and putting the gym addition on. Next slide. We go to Helsing, oh, field, I'm sorry, field floor plan. This is the same floor plan as Erickson. Next slide. And then we go over to Helsing. Again, we do show the parking lot expansion and also the parent drop-off. One other key item in the, in the bond program is new playground equipment. We will be relocating some of the playground equipment here that gets displaced by the parking expansions. And again, all of that work will be brought out during the design sessions with the staff and administration. Next slide. Same floor plan, again, equity, equity, equity. All these buildings will be getting the similar programs and then similar additions. Next slide. Okay, so Dodson School, again, going back to the process, Bill had mentioned that we do have classroom needs in the south end of the district. So Dodson School was of a size that was felt, not small enough, but felt that we could put four classrooms on this building without overtaxing the facility. So we are looking at putting a classroom addition just on the west side of the building, if we look at the floor plan. And again, in the bond, this is just representation of showing four classrooms on the building. Where they truly end up will be part of the design team in meetings with the staff and administration. And that's the four buildings graphically in the plan form.
So then, just, just to refresh, the, the timeline for this bid package is the design period is for the, the architect to prepare their work, September through December, and then bidding and award in January and February with that construction timeframe of April, November type thing. So that's, that's like, this, this bid package's timeline. The, the, the next slide is, it's hard to believe that once this is getting going, the 2022 comes up kind of quickly. I just briefly touched base on the next slide. Is next on the horizon, there is work planned for the high schools, at the Salem High School, for the performing arts addition and, and renovation. And then also for the Plymouth High School band room addition and new natatorium. Those projects take a little longer gestation in design. And so it's fair that in the fall of, later in the fall, we would, the, the, the team could get started on those and start having those types of meetings so that that work could then be bid out. It's, it takes about a year of, of, of design and planning to get those projects ready for bid. So that would be right after the elementaries get going, start talking about these types of projects as well. So where we're at, next steps, you're in the, the process of execution of the professional services agreements. The confirmation of the program schedule, especially bid package one, ES dash one. And then we'll be getting the soil borings, the surveys underway. And then the scheduling of design meetings with district staff. So that's, that's what's on our, our slate of things to do, so to speak. So with that, are there any questions?
Okay, John, do you have any questions? You can put your hand out. I'll talk to some people. Do you have questions? No? Oh, it looks like he does. We can't hear you, John, if you're talking. If you can text one of us a question, we'll read them then. So Patrick, do you have a couple of questions?
Oh, somebody. Sorry. So I wanted to understand on the design meetings that we have with staff, are those design meetings that are done with just the staff? Is the community involved? How, what's the process of going through that design process to, to get to the, the final design? Can you give us a little bit more elaboration on how that works?
Well, typically, what will happen is we'll get with the principal and go through and work through all the scope that's in the bond. We set up meetings between the principal, staff, and anyone that there would be like to be part of that process. Typically, we ask for some students to be involved so that they can help design some of the areas that they'll be using. When we, we allow, not allow, when we ask the, the school to gather a group to help in the process, we typically try to set up little groups that would be, you know, maybe six, seven, eight people on the district side so that it's a wide variety of teachers and administrators and custodial staff so that everyone has a voice in what takes place in the building. Now, on top of that, Patrick, we'll be going through and working through the administration, like through TIM and direct operations and material selections. There'll be district meetings for colors and color selections and color palettes. So this truly is a collaborative process with as many people as really the process can hold. You know, as we get, obviously, if the building, if the process gets too large, or the number of people at these meetings get too large, they do get a little too cumbersome. But we typically have had a lot of success when we, we allow the principal to invite the people that are, are passionate in her building or his building to be part of that process. And sometimes it does include parents. And again, I think that the key is making sure that some of the students get involved so that they have some excitement in what's coming.
Very much. I'll let John Lozarowitz ask his questions now.
Okay, go ahead, John.
First question, how many formal competitive bids did the district get for the bond? And if we didn't get any competitive bids, why not?
This, this process here is to go out for design in order to bid the work. So this process goes through FNO and our Finance and Operations committee. And then there's a first read and a second read for the design process. So then we approve the design process to move forward. And then that forward, that information will go to a public bid. And then those bids will come back to the Board, FNO Committee, and then a first read and a second read. And that will be based on their timeline somewhere in the January to February of 2021.
I was asking about the Architect, Engineer, and Construction Manager. Did we ever receive more than one competitive bid for their services?
No, we did not go out for bid for the Construction Manager and the Architect. We provided that information to the Board and talked about that in three FNO meetings. And we weren't going to talk about that until after the individuals are excused from the meeting so that we could have a conversation, but.
Yeah, just for, for John and everybody else, those are the next topics that are up is, is the approval, consider the approval for the Construction Manager and Architect. Those are the just first reads, and they'll be the next two items that we bring up on the agenda. This particular item is just for the design and bid phases for the EL1 project, which is the four EL Elementary School first read.
Okay, Doug, do you have any questions? Kate, do you have any questions?
Hi, thank you for the presentation. I wanted to express my gratitude to both TMP and McCarthy and Smith for the relationship we've had over the years. So I appreciate that we can count on you to, to get the work done and get it done well for our district. I was wondering about the plans that have been shared, and I'm sorry, there's echo going on. The plans that have been shared, I, I think, Bill Weinrock, I believe you said a couple of times that these were just preliminary plans. And I know I expressed during the visioning process that I am hoping that we can find a way to maybe change those up a little bit. And I'm, of course, not an expert, you guys are the experts. But I just want to make sure that when we're thinking about classroom spaces, that we do try to maximize the amount of natural light that students get, because I think that's very important. So that's just my, thank you, and my little request.
Amanu, do you have questions? Okay. So I just wanted to thank you. This was a lovely presentation. And on that first one that you showed, if people are at home, you can blow it up as big as you want to on your screen, and it's actually, you can see what it is. And I also just want to make sure people understand that this is not a set in stone type of thing. These were the preliminary plans. It might not look exactly like this because once they talk to the principals in the school community, they may have some changes. That's just the way anybody who's ever had work done on your house knows. That's the way it goes. But this was, this was lovely. It seems, it makes it real now, all that work on the bond. And then we had it, you know, our last in-person, full people in a room meeting was the night of the vote. And so this makes it real when we see this kind of, you know, getting ready to do the design on some of these projects. So I'm hoping that the community is going to be as involved in this as they have been so far. And this does make it real to the community, and they can see where this, this bond project is actually going and improvements on these schools. So I didn't really have a question. I just wanted to say thank you. This was a lovely presentation. Patrick, do you have another question?
Just a comment.
A layer on back of what, what you just mentioned there, Ms. McCoyn, is that these are the initial projects, these things across the 10 years, the exact projects, how we build them, the order that we do them, they're subject to change. They're changed based upon the conditions and, and how the district evolves over time. But these first four are the ones that we're starting on right now. And these are the ones that we want to move forward with in that process to help bring that equity and really address some of the, the security issues that we have in those schools. So we're excited at, across the board to be moving on, on these projects. So thank you for the work, and we look forward to bringing this forward to a vote at the next board meeting.
Great.
Okay, so do you have, do you have another presentation on? Are we moving on?
No, I thank the, Bill McCarthy, Gail Oliveto, and Bill Weinrock for joining us and presenting the general preliminary plan for the design and bid phase work on bid pack EL1, and I thank them for their attendance.
Thank you. Thank you so, thank you so much. And so that was the first read. We'll be seeing this again at our next board meeting. So thank you so much.
And if there's further questions, the FNO Committee is going to meet on September the 10th, as Member Kehoe indicated, and we'll be answering any questions that come up between now and then. Thank you all. Moving on, the, consider approval of contract toward 2020 Construction Manager and 2020 Architectural Firm. I just want to frame where we've been to date. So FNO met on July the 30th and discussed this bond program, 2020 bond program, and included the proposals for services for the Architectural and Construction Manager Services. At that time, we then had questions and moved forward on, on FNO Committee meeting on August the 6th. Dana Abrams of Clark Hill joined us to discuss the revised proposals and evaluate them against others from an economic perspective. We then met again on August the 20th, as Member Kehoe alluded to earlier. And Dana helped us again go through the Michigan compiled laws, as well as the PCCS board policies. We looked at rates provided are the same fee percentages on the scope of work as was in the 2020, 2013 bond issue, pardon me. And then we'll again discuss these at the FNO meeting on September the 10th to move forward with finalizing contracts, should the Board have this on their agenda for the Board meeting of September the 15th for final read. Based on the longstanding relationship with other firms, extensive knowledge of the district buildings and personnel, the flexibility they've shown, the commitment to the district, and the team and partnership we've established today, we are recommending this for our first read this evening. Member Kehoe, did you have any other comments based on your Chairman of the FNO Committee?
I, I want to echo the comments that we've had. We've, we've very much enjoyed the work that we've done with, with both TMP as well as with McCarthy and Smith. They, they've represented the district well and done good quality work for us over the, the past bond programs. There has been some good discussions that we've had over the past FNO meetings, and we're pleased to see that they've come forward with a fee structure that is aligned to what we've previously been paying. And that is a, a really important thing for us as a district to make sure that not only is that aligned to what we've previously been paying, but is also within the ranges and within the competitive rates of what we see in surrounding districts and surrounding programs. And so we feel comfortable barring some contractual work that needs to happen between now and September 10th and, and getting those things resolved and, and moving forward with, with our work with McCarthy and Smith, as well as with TMP. our work with McCarthy and Smith as well as with TMP.
Okay, is there any questions, Mr. Liston?
Okay, so let me go back to the first question. I'm sorry, I'm dealing without a headset. I apologize. So was there, was there any formal competitive bids that the district get from the, from this bond, from these companies? Was there? Second question for me is, keeping in mind that the competitive bidding is intended to protect the taxpayer and not the bidder, is this bid in compliance with the state law and board policy?
Yes, because competitive bids aren't required for services, as was responded to by Dana Abrams at our last F and O meeting.
I'm sorry, can you repeat that? I hit a little, raise up the volume on this.
I'm sorry. So you asked, you are now required to competitively bid services under Michigan compiled laws nor under the PCCS board policy.
Do you know the statute for that law?
It's an MCL. I could get it for you because three.
Please, that would be great.
Yep.
And I'm sorry, go ahead, Patrick.
I was just going to provide some context for you. We discussed this extensively in the F and O meeting, and we had a, a long conversation about competitive bidding and what needed to be necessary for these professional services. We, our board policy and the work that we do does require competitive bidding for any of the services related to bond work. So if we had services, it's, is part of a construction project, then those have to be competitively bid. But these particular work, these professional services, much like our legal fees, are not required in either state law or our bond program. So that is where we're at from a legal perspective. We, as you know, we've talked extensively about these fees and these processes and the work that we went through and how we selected the right firms that were there. And with their, their final proposal coming back being aligned to the previous prices that they have been charging and having them be based upon the analysis that, that our, that Clark Hill had done as well as the administration has done, we felt comfortable in moving forward with, with this process, barring some contractual work that needed to be clarified and addressed, and we will be discussing in our next F and O meeting. I just wanted to give you some of that context around that.
And I did find the MCL numbers. It's MCL 380.1267, construction of a new school building or addition or to repair or renovate an existing school building. MCL 380.1274, procurement of supplies, materials, and equipment, and MCL 380.1274A, energy conservation improvements.
Because I have nothing here. Give me one second, I'm sorry.
What was the number? Do you have it?
This is actually three numbers.
Okay. Thank you so much.
John, 1267 is the one that probably you want to spend, you want to take a look at, and it, it calls out where you have to call out for, for competitive bidding. Competitive bidding for the construction, not for the professional services. And that was the, you have to call up for competitive bidding for the construction, but not for the professional services. That was the, both the review that the administration did as well as that the administration or the district's attorney with Clark Hill confirmed that in that, that process, that there is no requirement for us to, from a law perspective, to bid out professional services for anything that we do for the district, whether it be legal fees or construction managers or anything along those lines. Further, further, they, they, our board policy also does not require that. Our board policy only requires the actual construction to be bid out for, for a competitive bid perspective.
So in the, the board notes that we got on July 1st, there was a document in there that talked about the recommendations for professional services that laid out pretty
Continue on.
Okay, does anybody else have any questions about this? Any comments? Okay, I just wanted to, okay, go ahead.
Jesse Kehoe, you're muted.
Thank you. I just wanted to make sure that the community knows and that, that we're clear about the process that we've gone through. We have had a longstanding relationship with both of these firms, working with us throughout the district on a number of bond projects, and we've also had conversations with, as part of the, the proposals that have been received from both these firms as well as conversations with other districts on understanding the competitive bid process. And the most important thing that everybody has always told us is the relationship that you have with your firms is the key in terms of what's happening. And we have had an excellent relationship with TMP as well as with McCarthy and Smith. Some of the anxiety that I personally had in this process was related to some of the fees that we were seeing coming through on this, and through the conversations through the F and O business or the F and O meetings, through the, the work that the administration has done, as well as these firms, they have brought their, their fees back in line to what we previously have been paying, which were on the low side of the, of the bids that we were seeing in, in other similar construction projects. It's very tough to do direct comparisons in these activities from one project to another because of the, the number of different things that are included or not included. Back in the 2013 bond process, we did go out to competitive bid and received a competitive bid for architecture firms, and we selected TMP again at that time in 2013, and they were both the low bidder at that time, as well as the one that had the most experience and the best proposal for the, the district. So given that we're retaining the same rates that they gave us in the 2013 bond project, I'm personally comfortable in moving forward with them as well as with the rates that we have with McCarthy and Smith in this process. The other thing I want to make sure is clear to fellow board members as well as to the community, we have the ability to terminate these relationships and these programs with these vendors at, at convenience, which means that we have to pay them for any work that they've done to date, but we do not have to retain the long-term contract with the hem if we do not believe that that is in the district's best interest. So at some point in the future, if we are non-happy with the services that are being provided, or for whatever reason, termination for convenience, we can terminate these agreements in this process. Given the longstanding relationship that we've had with them, given the great quality work that they've done for us, given the, the prices that they've, or the rates that they've come back with, given the termination for convenience, this, to me, gives us the flexibility that we need to have as a district to move forward with these vendors and to support this process. There certainly are some Ts to be crossed and Is to be dotted in the contract process, and there is things that we need to make sure that are clearly defined as we, we move forward, and those will be done before our next F and O meeting on the 10th, and then we'll be able to formally vote on this on the, the, the next board meeting on the 15th. Thank you.
Okay, I just wanted to say that, so I've had, I had children in the district for many years, and they're out, but I, I think that we need to understand that there is a savings involved in keeping people that we do have the longstanding relationship to. They know our buildings, they've walked our buildings, they've participated in this. So they know a lot of things that would have to, somebody else would take a while to get up to speed, and that may be a significant cost if we were built for those hours as somebody tries to get up. Also, I, I don't want to downplay the, the cost and time it could be to our administration if our administration had to spend many additional hours moving a new firm up to speed to get there. I have appreciated the relationship we've had with them. They've always been willing to come to our board meetings to answer our questions and many times sit there for many hours while we were doing that. So I, I do appreciate that. I will send out, I will, I will send out an email to the board members with our board policy and things in it so everybody has them handy. I will do that probably tonight when I get home. So I believe, are we, are we done with this topic and are we moving on? Did you have anything else, Ms. Piaz?
No, ma'am, sorry.
No, no problem. I just wanted to make sure. So we are done with that. We are now to number, to letter E, which is discussion. I don't believe we have any discussion items here. And so that means we are on to F, which was follow-up board questions. And I don't think we had follow-up board questions. Our board questions have all been related to starting school, which we are still also discussing. So does anybody have any questions from tonight that were not answered?
I'll have questions, but I'll submit those in the email.
Perfect. Okay, so we will be doing that. So that means that we are now to letter G, which is adjournment. So we have come to the end of our agenda, and we will be adjourning. It is 9:24. This is a record for us. Thank you so much, and have a lovely week.